It's 5:30. Yeah, it's 5:30.
Yeah?
We'll go ahead and, in accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws of 1976, Section 30-4-80, as amended, notification of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting on the County Council Building and at a publicly accessible place, and on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to all the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notifications. Item 2, Executive Session, a public body may report a meeting closed to the public in one way or another following reasons, discussion, or negotiations, intent to propose contracts or arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property, receiving legal advice or the legal advice related to any threat or potential claim or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims or possession of a public agency or other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency claiming Exit 3, engagement between Lawrence Flynn, Lawrence Flynn of Pope Flynn, nickel plate tolling agreement extension. Discussion of matters related to proposed location, expansion of provision of services encouraging or expansion of industries and other businesses in the area served by a public body prospect of the exempt. This time we'll call for a motion to go into Executive Session.
Make a motion to go into Executive Session as stated by the chairman.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Going to Executive Session. This time we'll call for a motion to come out of Executive Session.
Make a motion that we come out of Executive Session at this time.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You need motions as a result of Executive Session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the engagement letter with the law firm of Pope Flynn out of Columbia regarding representation of Jasper County with a 2024 capital lease, lease purchasing financing as discussed in Executive Session.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You need other motions as a result?
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the tolling agreement extension regarding Nickel Plate Road LLC as discussed in Executive Session.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This time if you would please stand and join me in the closing of the meeting. I'll adjourn with the question by class chairman Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads, our heavenly Father, we've come this afternoon in the most humblest way that we know how. Dear God, we come asking you to have mercy and share your grace upon us. Father God, we ask that you bless this administration that handles the business for Jasper County, and pray, God, that they will go in the right direction, and they will have the assistance of county council to do the things that needs to be done. Dear God, I ask that you stand for the people who are in need. Dear God, we ask that you shower your blessings upon the sick and the shuddering everywhere. And, dear God, we thank you because you brought us all back from the Thanksgiving holidays, and I'm quite sure we were grateful to have a meal on our table when there were so many people who didn't have anything to you. But we say, "Thank you, Lord." These and other blessings, we ask in your son, Jesus Christ's name, that everybody get know the worth of prayer. Say amen.
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 Hey, thank you, ma'am. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Thank you for being with us. And we're going to start by having our swearing-in ceremony with Councilman Chris Van Geeson and our very own Judge Nancy Gutierrez, who's been working hard all day at the Jasper-Chamber Golf Scholarship Tournament. Good to see you again, Judge.
Good to see you. Chairman, how are you? How's everyone in the county council? All right, let me get you some happy faces. Okay, we can have the wife and the... I need you to hold the mic. I want you to put your right hand on the mic. Raise your right hand, sorry. And repeat after me.
I'm Chris Van Geeson.
I, Chris Van Geeson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of.
To exercise the duties of.
This office to which I have been elected.
To this office which I have been elected.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Did you want to say anything?
Just thank you very much for putting me in this position. It's a lot of responsibility, and I will do the right thing by all peoples, so I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll call for approval of our consent agenda.
I make a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion to remove item 27 from the consent agenda, place it to the regular agenda.
Ms. Clark, could you amend your agenda for that, please? Number 27, the county council schedule meeting dates.
Okay. I'll amend it.
Remove 27, maybe make that item 24B. Does that work?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So amend it, the consent agenda minus number 27.
Minus number 27.
So make that motion.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to remove 27 to the regular agenda and move our consent agenda to 24B.
Well, remove 27 from the consent agenda, is all we need.
Yeah, okay, remove 27 from the consent agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay. And approval of the regular agenda? Have a motion for that, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Presentations, Mr. Arthur Benjamin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Just want to give you a little update on construction for the detention center. They've been working with the company. They already cut it out, the facility, a certain part. We also have, just signed off on the blueprints for the rebuild of the booking cabinets and everything, so that's in the works. Also been working with the local law enforcement, trying to come up with different scenario, start a small process of allowing individuals to come in, book in, so we're still working on that. I have a meeting with the local law enforcement as of Wednesday, so different solutions I'm bringing up to them to try to maybe start something up, because I know Alton Barron with Hampton County on their end and on our end is getting to slim chance, so we started taking a little bit of intake from local agencies, and like I said, we'll have another meeting Wednesday, so that's where we at right now.
Tell him before you think everything will be back to minimums, so to speak, and...
He's contracted, he'll let me know that tomorrow.
Have you got an approximate time line?
Well, he first said between six to eight weeks, but he's just waiting on the material coming back that he ordered, so that's what's going on now. We've got a lot of construction going on. We have, we're replacing new tools as we speak as well, and some other items we're doing now as well, but I will get the information back tomorrow, because I do let, I let Mr. Poggi know of course about it.
Any questions, Mr. Van Geeson?
No.
No, just keep on pushing.
All right.
No questions.
Yes, would you, are you informing the judges about the progress?
I've been meeting with the judges. We've been doing a weekly meeting at the judge's house. You know, we've been eyeing out some tweets and things, so communications can be...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, next item is, is it for David Tetter? Consideration of Resolution R-2024-43, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of 5.0, five acres of land in Moore West owned by First Carolina Corporation of South Carolina at the Center Point Development Agreement property located Highway 170 adjacent to John Paul for school site being part of the tax map number 08100-03-01.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Some time ago, a little bit better a year ago, there was a limit in the Center Point Development Agreement that provided for a civic site as it's defined in the development agreement donation to our, actually, it was a donation, transfer to the county. There's valuation methodology set forth in the development agreement. Regardless of that, the owner, First Carolina Corporation, his president is John Travis III, wishes to give a total of approximately 4.3 acres of land, some of which wetland, but it still is in excess of the three acres of high land that is negotiated for, irrespective of the value, it's worth more than what the appraisal value is, excuse me, than the cap value is, he's just going to donate that, so we get the benefit of a little bit of additional land. This site, for those that wish to locate it, if you're driving towards Beaufort from the Cherry Point area, John Paul, the second Paul Fields on your left, there's the U. L. Road that goes to Carolina Hospice. You return in there, and that area right there next to you, we turn in, is where the five acres located. It has frontage on Highway 170. The excess area will be on the backside of it, so this is, he wishes to get the donation done this year, this tax year, so he's asking us to approve the location of the site and accept the dedication at no dollar cost to County at this time. His questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Mr. Van Geeson, any questions?
No.
Ms. Clark?
No question.
We are accepting wetlands?
We're accepting wetlands as part of the overall tract that runs through it.
How much of the wetlands, do you know?
If I'm reading it right, it's approximately 28, four acres.
Is that wetland? That's freshwater, weather.
Freshwater wetlands. Some of this wetland is further up, there's a strip, several strips of rural water, frontage of 170. Enclosure permits have been given granted by the Army Corps of Commerce, roadways moves across that area there, so it's not that it's totally unusable, it just requires additional permitting if you're going to use a permit or something that would be allowable on the Army Corps.
Thank you. This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'd like to make a motion to consider, for consideration of Resolution 2024-43, accepting from First Carolina Corporation 5.05 acres of land.
Correct, I think it's 4.34 acres of land.
Hold on, I didn't hear you, 5.5.
I think the title belongs to...
Okay.
Is that accurate?
I corrected to 4. whatever, 4.43. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration of Resolution R-2024-44, resolution of Jasper County FC authorizing a capital lease purchase financing in an amount not exceeding $11 million, proof of the execution and delivery of necessary documents and closing papers and other matters related thereto, and this is for the 11 pumpers.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is for the lease purchase of the 11 pumpers that the council approved the purchase of approximately a year ago. We had an ordinance that was approved in, I believe it was, to issue, I have a bond issuance to finance this, these pumpers. It has been determined that lease purchase financing is the appropriate means to finance this equipment, this apparatus, therefore, we're bringing this resolution to you for your approval in order to proceed with the lease purchase financing options that hopefully we'll be seeing in the next few days.
Any questions, Mr. Van Geeson?
No.
Ms. Clark?
None.
What's the total lease cost? It says not to exceed 11 million, what was the total that we're looking at?
We haven't gotten the proposals yet. The total, the total purchase price is about 9.6, I believe it is, there's going to be some closing costs and legal fees, things like that, so we took it up to not to exceed 11, but the actual apparatus is closer to 9.6, 9.7 million.
Okay. Mr. Camp, any questions?
And just, any excess funds going to go back to pay off the debt, correct?
That is the plan, yes, sir. We can do that.
Thank you.
But we would probably just get enough, a sufficient amount because it is a lease purchase. We provide the invoice, and then there'd be some closing costs, et cetera, so probably won't be any excess.
But if there is, we would...
That would be the appropriate treatment, yes, sir.
Thank you. This time we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I make a motion that the resolution be considered for Jasper County South Carolina authorizing a capital lease purchase financing in an amount not to exceed 11 million.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Mr. Tetter, consideration of Resolution R-2024-45, a resolution of Jasper County Council memorializing the ratification of the option contract for purchase of 252 Russell Street, Ridgeland, South Carolina, having tax, tax map number 063-26-02-003, and matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, they recalled this past summer, we put under contract Attorney Thayer Rivers property on the other side of the courthouse across the way here. The council ratified the option agreement on August 19th. We didn't have the minutes, we're rapidly getting to closing period, and this is a document that we've used 11 purchases that memorializes the ratification of the option, authorizes county administrator to sign all the documents necessary to complete the purchase.
I think it's the wind.
Must be. Well, it's not good when the police leave, when the fire leaves.
I never hear wind blowing outside of this building, that's why I'm wondering, it must be pretty strong.
Come and get them.
I have nothing to do with this.
We want to...
I did just notice the mayor's here and in, Councilwoman Guzman from City of Hardyville, and I just, I didn't see y'all walk in and just noticed recently y'all were sitting in the crowd, so thank y'all for being with us.
You want to take a brief recess until we get mics back?
No.
Mic still up?
The mic's still on, keep it rolling. Let's go.
Because we're on emergency power.
So we can get home.
Well, let's keep rolling, Mr. Mike.
So, any of this memorializes what the council did by a motion coming out of Executive Session on August 19th, provides data necessary to complete the title insurance file that go off in Harvey and Baden, we issuing when we complete the purchase. It is rescheduled for next week. We're on track to close on time, so we request that you formalize, pass this resolution.
And this, this property will be for expansion of office, the administration facilities, which is located right here in front of the courthouse.
Right in front of the courthouse, on the corner.
Any questions, Mr. Van Geeson?
No.
Ms. Clark?
As soon as we close, how soon do you think before we're able to utilize that building?
It's a matter of just, it's my understanding from the conversation today that he's trying to complete his move out over the weekend, this coming weekend, so that it'll be ready for us on Monday for our walkthrough inspection. It'll be our possession immediately after that. Of course, there's a little bit of change utility over something like that, so this meeting is going to be ours next week.
Camp? Are there any leases, existing leases on that building?
No, on the one next to it, there are, but we're not purchasing that one. This one's simply his law office, and he'll have to be vacated out of it.
This time we'll call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution of Jasper County Council memorializing the ratification of option contract for the, for the purchase of 252 Russell Street, Ridgeland, South Carolina.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Mr. Tetter, consideration of Resolution R-2024-46, a resolution authorizing a joinder agreement to provide for the addition of Almedo Plastics Innovations LLC as a sponsor affiliate to authorize an assignment of the benefits of such agreement and to address other matters related thereto.
Yes, sir, this is a part of an existing multi-county park. This is for the project that we've been referring to as pilgrimage in southern part of the county, Partickville area. Under that multi-county park agreement and funeral agreement, we have people that come in and take parts of property and become parties to that agreement through the use of a joinder agreement. through the use of a jointer agreement. In just a moment, you'll be having third reading of the ordinance approving the new FEO agreement with Project Pilgrimage, Palmetto Plastics. This acknowledges that they're becoming party to the existing agreements.
Any questions, Mr. Van Gees? Not.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Brown?
No questions.
No question. It's time we call for a motion for approval, please.
I, um, consider, consideration of resolution authorizing a jointer agreement to provide for the additional of Palmetto Plastic Innovation LLC.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tetter, public hearing and consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-26, authorizing the execution and delivery of special source revenue credit agreement bound between Jasper County SC and Palmetto Plastic Innovations LLC, a company known as Project Pilgrimage, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will receive certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Yes, sir. We had an unofficial public hearing on this. Thank you. This is the other side of the project I just was mentioning. This is for a public hearing tonight for final meeting on this one. This one adopts a special source of revenue credit in addition to what's out there so that this addition of approximately eight million dollars of infrastructure, or infrastructure capital improvements down there off of Highway 170, Old 170 up, Highway 17, an existing park. The credits are 25% for year 25, 10% for year 6 through 10, and then it reverts back to the normal. Previously, we had a public hearing and two meetings. The public hearing notes in the paper didn't go out, so that's why we're doing another public hearing tonight.
Okay. It's time we look into the fall for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this specific topic, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, we'll call for a motion. For any questions, Mr. Van Gees?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No questions.
No questions. It's time we call for a motion for approval, please.
Called, and a consideration of the third reading of this ordinance, authorizing the execution and delivery of the special source revenue credit agreement by and between Jasper County, South Carolina, and Palmetto Plastic Innovation LLC, a company also known as Project Pilgrimage.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Tetter, consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-27 to establish pursuit of section 4-1-170, the Court of Law SC, 1976, as amended in Multi-County Industrial Business Park in conjunction with Beaufort County, South Carolina, to authorize the execution and delivery of a multi-county park agreement bound between Jasper County, South Carolina and Beaufort County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Beaufort County as to sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a fee and lieu of applicable taxation and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is the third reading of the ordinance we've had before, even twice before with public hearing. This is a project in Beaufort. The defense contractor is doing infrastructure capital improvements over there. Beaufort County has asked us to be the participating or 1% accounting of this as an accommodation, as we often, Hackett County does for us. This is a 20-year fee and lieu agreement that Beaufort County is sponsoring, and they've asked us to, again, to be the participating county and receive 1% for assisting them and coordinating with them. The only change is since the last reading, the insertion of proper names and dates.
Any questions, Mr. Van Gees?
No.
Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Brown?
No questions.
Mr. Camp? Yes. Who monitors this? Then we're getting our money.
Sorry, sir.
Who monitors this?
Actually, we have been working with Beaufort County and our economic people to put together spreadsheets and tabulation. Typically, it's the Department of Revenue and Columbia that is the super monitor of it. There's filing they have to do. Then it comes down to the auditor in Beaufort County who's supposed to make the distributions. So we're putting together and working with Beaufort County to have a more cohesive and coordinated approach. Correct, Mr. Fulgham? Yes. So that we have a better audit trail.
But who is the person?
Well, it's the treasurer that does the disbursements.
Thank you.
And we have to know that from each county, but we understand that they need to know what the matrix is and we'll be able to do that. So what we're proposing is to do an annual meeting with our partners in Hampton and Beaufort to review this information. We have Parker Pro Consulting now representing us going through all of them. So we know ours are straight with our treasurer. We just need to give it to our neighboring counties to make sure that happens as well.
Thank you. Mr. David Tetter, second public hearing only of an ordinance approving a development agreement for the Jasper Telfair tract pursuant to South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act in Article 4, Title 20 of the court of ordinance of Jasper County and authorizing the chairman of Jasper County Council execute said development agreement and matters related thereto. Do we need to do a third reading on?
I don't think we voted on it. I think there was a question.
There was a. We bumped the brakes and put it in reverse to say, all right, we need to call for a motion for item 15.
Make a motion, consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2024-27.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, now we moving back up to 16.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall in our meeting in November, we had this on the agenda and it was several questions came from council members about items in the development agreement. There's a PDD that goes along with this that we're not hearing tonight. This is the second required publicized public hearing, got to have two in the development agreement. There were some tweaks that the council asked for that have not yet been implemented on that that had to do with the access points on 315 and Highway 17, and some questions about the viability or timeliness of intent to serve letters. I understand they're getting those updated to be brought forward at the next meeting of council that this is to be considered with the PDD so all their documentation is current. We'd also discussed having traffic impact study updated and sending it out for peer review with perhaps the same, I believe, that we use for 95 logistics stand tech. So that we have that information to bring back to you at the next, for the next consideration of reading. So this is a public hearing only to give the public an opportunity to speak if they want to. Mr. Barrano, the owner developer is in the audience. If there are any questions, there could be better answer than I can.
Okay, this is a public hearing, second public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this specific topic, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to item 17, Ms. Wagner. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer the property located on Floyd Road bearing tax map number 045-00-01-049, consisting of three acres from the rural preservation zone to residential zone of Jasper County official zoning map. Ms. Wagner, nothing's changed in the past?
Um, no. And this is first reading. This is just a very simple request for rezoning from, we're requesting that it be rezoned from rural preservation to residential. The next page will just show you the surrounding zoning of the properties. This is Floyd Road in the Tillman area. It's, it's owned rural preservation. It abuts residential and rural preservation. The land uses are residential and rural preservation. So we're just at, the planning commission reviewed this at their meeting in November, and they recommended a favorable recommendation. This was actually a staff-initiated request.
Any questions, Mr. Van Gees?
No.
None.
Mr. Brown?
No questions.
Mr. Camp? Were there any negatives at the plan?
There were not, and we'll set this up for public hearing at our next meeting.
And I just have one other question. If, when you rezone this, are they going to have to pay it back three, three years back? Is this part of this?
Um, they would not, no, it's not enough acreage to be subsigned in the agricultural tax.
Hey, it's time we call for a motion.
I make a motion that this be the first reading of this ordinance to amend the official zoning map.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Camp? Ms. Wagner, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to adopt plan development district zoning, plan development district standards, and conceptual master plan for a tract of land consisting of approximately 223.70 acres bearing Jasper County tax map number 038-00-08-044 located along Bellinger Hill Road and known as Daily Organics PDD.
The applicant is requesting approval of a planned development district zoning designation for a commercial project, and if approved, will be known as Daily Organics PDD. Included with the zoning map amendment application is the concept plan and PDD standards. The project site consists of 223.7 acre parcel located along Bellinger Hill Road, which also has frontage on Bellinger Hill Run. The property is currently zoned rural preservation and is developed as an existing farm, which includes an organic composting and mulching operation. The applicant proposes to add a back end facility which will require an industrial zoning designation or a PDD that would allow this type of land use. The intent of the PDD is to encourage flexibility in the development of land to promote its most appropriate use and to do so in a manner that will enhance public health, safety morals, and general welfare. The PDD regulations are intended to accomplish the purpose of zoning and other applicable regulations to an equivalent or higher degree and are designed to control unscheduled development on individual lots or tracts, promote economical and efficient land use, provide an improved level of amenity, foster harmonious variety abuses, encourage creative design, and produce a better environment. The comprehensive plans future land use map identifies this area as rural transition. The rural transition areas are located in southern Jasper County and will likely be under pressure to develop within the foreseeable future. Development proposals in existing communities such as Levy Limehouse should be respectful and complement the scale and character of the area. The adjacent property to the north, it's used as residential and is zoned residential. To the south of this property, the existing use is a mining operation and it's owned resource extraction. To the west, the adjacent property is used for residential and vacant, and it is zoned residential and PDD. And to the east, the existing land use is residential, a small campground and mining operation. And those properties are zoned residential, rural preservation, and resource extraction. The properties accessed by Bellinger Hill Road and Bellinger Hill Run. Bellinger Hill Road is a two-lane state-maintained road classified as a limited local road. Bellinger Hill is a private dirt road. The proposed PDD will establish access points, the main access point exists and it's located on Bellinger Hill Road. The allowed land uses would be rural preservation, general, commercial, and industrial. The density that's proposed is 166 acres to remain rural preservation, 36 acres designated as general, commercial, and 21 acres designated as industrial. There would be a minimum of 10% open space based on overall commercial highlands. Stormwater best management practices will be used in the development to ensure runoff leaving the site. Meets South Carolina Department of Environmental Services, Office of Ocean and Coastal Resource Management, and Jasper County Standards for Water Quality. The concept map shows the commercial areas are set back 400-plus feet from Bellinger Hill Road. A landscape roadside buffer will be provided along Bellinger Hill Road as required by the zoning ordinance. The Daily Organics PDD and concept plan meets all the requirements for a PDD and application and concept plan as outlined in the Jasper County zoning ordinance. Hussey Gate Dale Engineering Firm determined that the current use produces 40 trucks a day, which is made up of 30 trucks, which includes customers, and 10 cars, which includes employees. The future condition is predicted to produce 40 trucks a day, including customers, and 20 cars a day, including employees. The Daily Organic property is currently served by well and septic tank. Electric is provided by Palmetto Electric. Telecommunication and fiber are not currently available to serve the Daily Organics property. A zoning designation of PDD does not entitle an applicant or owner of the affected property a right to develop or engage in any land use or land disturbing activity other than rights in existence at the time of the concept plan approval. To engage in development or any land use or land disturbing activity, a master plan and a subsequent development plan must be approved for the area to be developed. While the concept plan is very generalized, a master plan is a more refined document which will be reassessed by the planning commission at a future date. The planning commission recommends approval of the PDD designation and concept map. The planning commission also recommends that the PDD standards limit the uses to only allow commercial industrial uses that support the Daily Organics farm, including the existing composting and mulching operation and the proposed back end facility.
Ms. Wagner, the change that is the mechanism for going for PDD is that they currently have this business going on now, the mulching business, but they're going to bag it instead of selling it. So that's, they're going to bag it actually on property, and that's what created the request.
Yes, and they'll need to update, so they have, they're working under a DHEC permit for the compost and mulching, but they'll need an additional upgrade or change of that permit by DHEC, which will require, they would require a letter from Jasper County Planning Department saying that the property is zoned industrial. We can't do that unless they come, they come here and ask for rezoning to industrial. We felt that the PDD would be better than recommending industrial. An industrial rezoning is not going to fit in with the comprehensive plan. And the plan development district gives us the ability to have a better development to control the uses that could go there.
Any question, Mr. Van Gees?
No.
Ms. Clark?
Do the people in the area, have you had any concern from them? Or have you all met with them?
So we did send letters out at planning commission level, not, it wasn't required by the state, but we do that for PDDs because it can be a big deal to the community. We did not receive any feedback whatsoever. But we did notify everybody in, you know, in that community.
I see this gentleman back there is shaking his head no.
This is something that was a question that came up at our last community meeting, and they didn't understand what it was that came out, and they had some serious questions. They actually said that they went to the planning board meeting and wasn't given the opportunity to ask questions or speak on this. So I know that they're not in favor of this happening, the rezoning.
So we will set up a public hearing at the next meeting. You know, we don't have public hearings, official public hearings are done at council level and not at planning commission. We did send out a notice. They were given, the people who received notices could have emailed us, could have called, you know. We didn't receive any.
Lisa, you have to realize that emailing.
We didn't email. We mailed them.
No, we mailed them, but you said nobody.
They could have called us. Our phone number was on there, the email was on there, and our mailing address. So there were plenty of different ways to communicate.
There's a process for three readings with public hearings, and there'll be plenty of time.
But I'm saying, they said they didn't understand what it was. So if they didn't understand, they couldn't respond appropriately to let you know what was their concerns. That's, that's all I'm saying. They have to be, Marley, let her say something.
Well, we'll keep it in order. We'll, we'll have public hearings and opportunities for people to comment. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Brown?
Ms. Barbara asked a question that I had, but also I did take a trip out there just to lay eyes on it, and it does meet everything that's spelled out in the PDD. We'll just open it up for public comment whenever we have that option.
Mr. Kim, I vote the owners, I have no questions right this time. This time we'll call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to consider first reading of an ordinance to adopt plan development district zoning, plan development district standards, 223.7 acres.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Cutter, consideration of first reading of an ordinance approving a development agreement for the Daily Organic's development property consisting of approximately 223 acres, more or less owned by Bellinger Hill Properties LLC in the Bellinger Hill area of Jasper County, SC. Pursuant to South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act in order of the floor, Title 20 of the Code of Ordinance of Jasper County, authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County Council to execute the development agreement in matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of council, to accompany, the P plan development district. It's a development agreement which locks the zoning in, in this case for a term of five years. It only qualifies for a five-year term, can be extended if the council was to see fit at the end of the first term, but it's only for five years. The process is, Chairman, you just noticed, the council holds public hearings on this. We can't have public hearings until we get it before you by first reading, just as we did a moment ago. There'll be two public sized hearings on the development agreement. The first one probably set up in January, the second one will be announced at that first meeting as we did with the tail fair development agreement. This particular development agreement doesn't, at this time, incorporate a developer impact fee for roads or fire at this point. We haven't identified what the necessities are there. This is in the Legion Fire District, which is, you know, we took over a year and a half, two years ago, and so we're trying to quantify the needs of the area out there. If there's a need for infrastructure in that area to support this, again, and mostly agricultural, not much impact, but with the industrial, we have to look at what we have out there to determine what our resources are to address it. A representative of the developer, attorney Ron Scott of the Haynesworth-Sinkley Boyd Law Firm is here. Scott's back there if he needs to answer any questions that I'm not able to. He's more familiar with his development, with his clients' plans than I am. But we'd ask at this time that we have a first reading of what we have here and work on it as we, in due course do, public hearings and additional input from the council in the future meetings.
Any questions, Mr. Bankes?
No, not this time.
No questions.
Mr. Kim? Were there some restrictions put on this PDD that they couldn't do? I think the, I think the, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked Lisa.
Well, since it's related, I'll let Ms. Wagner answer that question since that's her side of the coin.
Yeah, there were some, there are some uses that are prohibited in the PDD document. Sorry, if my memory serves me right, I think it's on page 13. Let's see. On page 13... There will be certain uses that will be prohibited. And then what I was pointing out in my staff report is that the planning commission asked that basically all uses be limited, like maybe allowed to have industrial and commercials that only supports the organic farming they have, the existing composting and mulching business, and the proposed back end facility. So that was their recommendation.
This time we'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to consider the first reading of an ordinance approving the development agreement for Daily Organic's development property consisting of 223 acres.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 2.1.1 of the Jasper County Land Development Regulation, the exempt subdivision, limiting the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption to four individual parcels to define an existing street and existing easement invoking application pending ordinance doctrine and other matters related thereto.
The intent of this ordinance is to amend the Jasper County Land Development Regulations, Article 2.1.1 exempt subdivisions, limiting the number of parcels that can be subdivided using the state's exemptions for parcels that are five acres and greater, where each parcel abuts an existing road right of way or access easement that was in existence prior to January 2018. Currently, there is no limit on the number of parcels that can be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption of the five acres. Over the last few years, Jasper County has received several exempt subdivisions that have created anywhere from 10 to 26 lots subdividing, in some cases, 100-plus acres with no community facilities, sidewalks, and other things that should be provided for a community. The Jasper County Land Development Regulations, Article 2.1.1 exempt subdivision states the division of land into parcels of five acres or more, where each parcel abuts an existing road right of way or access easement recorded prior to January 1st, 2018. The state's exemption states the division of land into parcels of five acres or more, where no new street is involved, and plats of these exceptions must be received as information by the planning agency, which shall indicate that fact on the plats. The proposed amendment seeks to limit the number of parcels that could be subdivided from a single parcel of land using the state's exemption for the five acres or greater to four parcels. It would also define an existing street and existing easement as amended. Well, here in your staff report, I've just copied and pasted Article 2.1.1 of the exempt subdivision, and the proposed change there is to reword number B under 2.1.1, which is shown on page two in the red print, just to change that to say the division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street or easement is involved, provided that out of any single tract of land, parcel of lot of land existing as a distinct tax parcel as of July 1st to 2024, no more than four such parcels may be created within a five-year period. And then just a commentary about what is existing streets or easements to add in number six under G and number seven, just to say that any public acquisition of land for right of way or drain easement or any lot of parcel created therefrom would be exempt subdivision. And number seven states a parcel of land that is proposed to be used as a site for a utility substation, power line easement, or right of way, pumping station, pressure regulating station, electricity regulating substation, and those types would also be an exempt subdivision. And then I do want to point out, in the ordinance that's provided, I was asking that you invoke the pending ordinance doctrine so that this goes into effect basically tonight until we can have the public hearing in the third reading. Do we need to have a public hearing with that?
We have to announce that we'll have a public hearing.
So we would need to announce that we'd have a public hearing at our next council meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mr. Bankes, any questions?
No.
Ms. Clark?
I'm sure we're going to get a few questions about this item. Could you basically kind of break it down where folks that are watching tonight or will be watching the meeting have a better understanding of this?
Sure. If you have 100 acres of land and you come in with a road that may be a right of way that existed as of January 1st, 2018, and the fire marshal approved it, today you could create, that would be 20 lots. It doesn't really have any type of review to make sure that adequate spaces and facilities are provided for a community, and those lots are sold. So years ago, Jasper County used to have this, and we restricted those to three. You can only do three lots. I know Hardyville allows five. I've talked with them, so it's not unusual to restrict it. What we're proposing tonight would restrict that. If you have 100 acres of land, if you want to do 20 lots, you need to come in as a major subdivision. This would allow you to create four, up to four lots that are five acres and greater.
You don't get a fifth, Kim? So that would be one less than what Hardyville would do.
That's right. We have our minor subdivision that allows up to four lots as well, but you don't have to have five acres. We used to allow three years ago, so Hardyville does allow five. We pick four.
Thank you. This time we'll call for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 2.1.1 of the Land Development Regulations exempt subdivisions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, Ms. Chairman, Giles, consideration of approval of candidate appointment.
Would you formally announce that there will be a public hearing in the service at the next meeting? And this motion...
Will be a public hearing.
Yeah, and this motion adopts the pending ordinance.
At our, at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Wanda Giles, consideration of approval of candidate reappointment to Jasper County Council to the Regional Housing Trust Oversight Board.
Yes, sir. This is for the submitted new candidates to the Regional Housing Trust Oversight Board. Ms. Michelle Gaston will not be seeking reappointment as the Jasper County's representative to the Regional Housing Trust Oversight Board for the next term. Her current term ends on December 31st, 2024. There is a copy of the staff report in their 110424 packet asking the council to start considering candidates for this appointment to this board, and we are requesting that council appoint a candidate to replace Ms. Gaston as of 1125 to the Jasper County Regional Housing Trust Oversight Board, if you have someone in mind.
The council, it's a bit names, it's long, it's tough. Yeah. I really, because there's a lot of work done there. I've got two that I'm working on. The council will find candidates for that position, we'll work on it till it happens.
Can we put it back on the agenda for January?
Sure. And also, Ms. Giles, consideration of approval for reappointment of Mr. Harry Williams to the Southern Carolina Alliance Regional Economic Development Board for director's appointment of 2025. Mayor, we appreciate your willingness to serve, and you play a big role in that organization, so thank you for what you do. Appreciate you coming back on board for another year.
So this is an easy one. We received a letter from Mr. David Gott regarding the SCA Board of Directors appointment for 2025. Jasper County Council appoints three members to the Southern Carolina Alliance Board of Directors. These appointments are staggered three-year terms, they're usually filled during the annual Board of Directors meeting each year in April. And this is a reminder that the term of Mr. Harry Williams expires on April 2025, and they are kindly requesting that council's confirmation of reappointment or replacement by December 31st, 2024, due to their upcoming Board of Directors retreat in January. So staff is requesting that council consider reappointing Mayor Harry Williams for another three-year term on the Southern Carolina Alliance Board of Directors.
We'll be that in form of a motion. And at this time we'll call for a motion.
Make a motion that Mayor Williams be accepted to serve on the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Chief Wells, consideration of approval of purchase of two mid-sized SUVs for the 911 Communications Division. This is a budgeted item and on state contract, request authorization for the administrator to execute all documents. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you, members of council. Again, we budgeted for this, these two vehicles in the 911 Communications Division. The vehicles, one more specifically, is for the communications technical specialist that will be carrying a lot of equipment, tools, in one of those vehicles to start moving through the county and working on mobile and portable radios in the field. And then the other vehicle would be assigned to the 911 Communications Division as well. That vehicle would be utilized by the staff for training events, court appearances, things of that nature, so that they're not using their personal vehicles. Again, this was a budgeted item. The vehicles that we propose are on state contract. I believe we provided you a quote for those, and what we are requesting is that the administrator be authorized to execute all documents to the purchase.
Any questions, Mr. Bankes?
Why Durango's?
They, they were on state contract. We can certainly look at other options for a mid-sized SUV. There are Ford Explorers, I believe Chevrolet Traverses. We reached out to a vendor, and that was what they had available on the lot at the time.
They just don't have a very good maintenance record.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
I, I can understand, I also have a 2024 Expedition that is now two months out of service on transmissions of Ford that and the thousand and two.
Yeah, Ford's had some problems with transmissions also, yes.
Yes, sir.
Guess it's a flip of a coin today, right?
It is, but we will certainly research, research that more.
That'd be, that'd be good.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Couple quick questions. The, the first person you said would be utilizing that, what was that position that would be used?
That's the communications technical specialist, that's Mr. Tambeen. He was hired in to do radio programming, radio maintenance, touching, tuning alignment. That's where, over the past fiscal cycles, we've acquired some equipment, specialized equipment for him, and then obviously we need the ability for him to have a vehicle to, to put all of that, those tools in and be able to go out in the field and work.
And then the other question for the other vehicle, as we're kind of looking beyond Durango's, do we, what's the likelihood of, with you all receiving a bunch of newer vehicles this year for others that would transition over for, for that to be able to be utilized?
We do have, we do have some that we were moving toward liquidation. Some of those vehicles have started to demonstrate some mechanical reliability concerns, but if that is your direction, we will certainly delve deeper into repurposing those vehicles.
That's all questions I have.
Mr. Kim? Why do we have a Durango for just transportation? Why wouldn't we buy a smaller vehicle? And number one, number two is do, do we have a motor pool? And how often are we going to use that car for transportation?
Court appearance for staff is every term of court. Some of our staff have actually gone to Hampton and Beaufort for testimony, and they also go to and from Columbia to the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy for some of their training, requisite training, but it's not as frequent as what we see in fire shows.
So we don't really, utilization, we could use a motor pool car?
Yes, sir, we could do that.
And on top of that, you're, I'm assuming that your, in your budget, it's 0482430, which is equipped.
Yes, sir.
It's $130,000.
Yes, sir.
Among that, you have many other things in there budgeted. Is the $40,000 that had left there, if you use this, is that going to cover all the other budgeted items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now, let's get, we're going to get a big star, a car, right?
Mid-sized SUV, yes, sir.
Not Durango, and we're going to get a smaller car for transportation.
Okay.
Is that what we want? I'm asking you really, or is that, can you do, deal with that?
The smaller vehicle, as much as I love our comm manager, I, I call him... The smaller vehicle, as much as I love our comm manager, I call him Havre. He is a very tall, broad-shouldered individual. Getting in and out of smaller vehicles is challenging. So that was one of the reasons why we considered a mid-sized SUV. He is the one that tends to go to court the most.
Well, I'll tell you, to me, if you use a diverse that we have for the council, we could use that. Because we don't use, I think we have 3,000, 4,000 miles on it. That's about it.
Give or take, yes, sir.
And that would be part of the motor pool.
If that is the direction, absolutely, sir. We can go that direction.
20% is being reminded all the time.
Yes, sir.
But I think we should just go with that. If we need a car, if it doesn't work out, we'll go ahead.
Sure.
We've got to watch out for the money.
If we table this to the next meeting, will that give you enough time to look for some things and come back with suggestions in January?
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Why are you going to table the chief on the state contracts? Is it just one motor brand like Dodge
that are on the state contracts this year?
Yes, sir.
Different manufacturers?
There's, there are different manufacturers that are on there. We're starting to see some, some other vehicle manufacturers breaking into the market.
State contract for Durango is at a lower price point, or is that, the Durango is at a lower price point?
From what we saw, it was, but there again, we can certainly explore a lot of other options.
When you do that, does the maintenance contract come along with it? Would the dealership service it? Or is that serviced?
No, sir. These are, these are the bare-bones, no-frill type vehicles that are-
State contracts.
Yep.
Is it the council's wish to table this until January?
I object to it. I don't think we should table it. And what happened, we tabled things and then when we come back, we are caught up in it. And it's not. The price on the car is not going to go lower. If anything, it's going to go higher. So why are we procrastinating to table something? He's the over the emergency service. Nobody knows better than what he knows as to what he needs. And he just said, I would love to see Councilman Joey over there getting him a small SUV if he would ever make it out.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until our next regular scheduled meeting.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes aye. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Kimberly Burgess, consideration of acceptance of a grant awarded the amount of $11,344.40 from the South Carolina Department of Health and authorize the county administrator to execute all documents.
Thank you again. The South Carolina Department of Public Health distributed state appropriated trauma funds in accordance with Section 31.22 of the Part IV Provisos of 2024, 2025 Appropriations Act. The funds are utilized to increase the capability of DMS trauma care providers from counties with a high rate of traumatic injury deaths to care for injured patients and for support of the trauma system. Jasper County has been allocated for fiscal year 2024, 2025, $11,344.40, which Chief Wells has determined that the funds will be used for training and education of trauma care providers. Staff recommends that the council approve the receipt of the grant, the South Carolina Department of Public Health grant, in the amount of $11,344.40 and to be used for training and education of Jasper County trauma care providers and to authorize the county administrator to execute all documents for the receipt of the grant funds.
Any questions, Mr. Benkies?
So does all the $11,344 go towards education?
That will be the purpose, yes.
Yep.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Allen?
No question, just a comment.
No questions. This time we'll call for a motion.
Make a move that the motion be, be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye. Thank you. Ms. Burgess. Next is item 24B, Ms. Wanda, consideration of draft schedule of the 2025 county council scheduled meeting dates for approval after January 6th.
Yes, sir. This is just a proposed draft that I wanted to give you the opportunity to look at so that we can come back to you in January after you gave me whatever changes you wanted.
Any questions, Mr. Benkies?
No.
Ms. Clark?
None.
Ms. Ryan?
Do have a couple of things. I would want to know if it be the will of the council maybe to change the start time of the council meeting to 6:00 instead of 6:30. And looking at some of the other months that we only have one meeting, to possibly put in a second meeting if it's not a conflict.
Those are things that can be incorporated into the draft of January 6th.
Yes, sir. The only conflict I know of right off the bat is in August, that very first meeting that you would normally have.
Scatter.
Is the, yeah, it's the SCA's annual meeting.
There's a few, a couple of those do happen here, I think. That's why that scatter works. And always a couple of special meetings. Mr. Kim, any questions?
Yes, I'd like to also remove the 5:30 for executive sessions, have executive session starting at 6 o'clock if we need it.
So?
And also, I would like to have, return to the fact that we would have meetings at Harterville if Harterville had us.
That's the chairman.
For each quarter or whatever.
Next. We have open floor to the public. Ms. Wanda?
Yes, sir. The first call is for public comment. 30 minutes are allocated for public comment and speakers allowed 30 minutes. Speakers may not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking times to another person. Speakers may sign in on a agenda list maintained by the public council prior to the meeting and include their name, address, and including such purpose for which they seek to address council. All public comments should be directed to the county council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Speakers should combine their comments under the jurisdiction of the county and shall not use public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, or candidates for public office. Council does not take action based on public comment at the meeting. As council does not take actions on items not on the agenda. The chairman may direct the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. All speakers shall be mindful and respectful of those participating and present at the meeting. Speakers will be civil in their language and shall refrain from comment or behavior that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, or any other destructive actions.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Mr. Henry Nettles, Road in Lynnville. Welcome, Mr. Nettles.
Thank you, Mr. Solz, County Council. First, over my list is Jim Nettles from- About 30 years ago, I come up here and asked the county to close the road. And I saw it was closed. David Law told me later it was not closed because two council members wanted to go look at the road. The next thing, and I'm at about that, and they said to go ahead and close the road. Stevie Smith and myself put up a post, closed the road. The reason we wanted the road closed was the school kids from Thomas Hayes, which leave, Thomas Hayes School that comes through, that we had two cars, the Terranova on the curb, and the cars were docking down the mailbox trying to beat the traffic count at 278 by going up, walking over the road. The road was never closed and about, I'm going to say 10 to 15 years ago when we had that first 21 inches of rent that I ever saw in the county. Henry Edrich brought Dale Terry out and had a violent edge for Thomas Scotty's so he could get his two trills back out. Henry told me the road wasn't closed. Up to that time, I thought it was closed. I went and saw David Law and he said, told me that the road was not closed because we didn't have a second hand on the road from the night. And I asked the road to be closed. So the road was never closed until here lately, I come up, and they said that the road is not in the system anymore. But we got 13 new families out there. We got about 20, 25 cars throughout our 13 families. The road needs to stay open and the county needs to work. If it was never took out, the county until somebody decided. I blamed it on Henry Edrich. He said, he didn't bring it before the council, but-
Mr. Nettles, we can research that for you and get with our administrator and see-
And every time I talk with you, Mr. Solz, you said the motor grader would be there tomorrow. Have you remember right?
I don't remember telling you the motor grader would be there tomorrow.
You told me that Monday, Tuesday, you'd go. Am I right, sir?
I remember him saying the motor grader would be there, but I did go out there and meet with you and ride the road and tell you that I'll do anything I can to help you out.
Right. We can't use a motor grader if it's not a county road.
Yes, sir.
Said if it was a county road, we could get the motor grader out there, but if it's not a county road-
But every time I talk with you, you say, we're going to work it next week.
We'll, we'll talk about it. I give you my word, we'll do that.
We will.
But it's not, it's not just for me. It's for 13 families.
Yes, sir.
I got one set of, yeah, now.
Thank you.
One of the ladies thought that was supposed to come with she working. Now, the other thing is the county's pivot. I worked up to January for Jasper County Recycling Center. And I, yeah, some of y'all, I suppose, I was short one second. If y'all looked at what y'all had, Ruth Smith to write up, and this, the county council wrote up, and it tells you, no contractors are supposed to carry that trash to the county. Recycling centers, they're supposed to carry it to the landfill. The county's hauling off trash for other people that they make money off of their job and they're bringing it through it into where it's supposed to. I got transferred from Harterville. Ms. Clark's going down that too. And she's the only councilman I ever saw come in to that recycling place. I worked at one in Harterville, High Plaza, and they transferred the road, you know, because they said I was too hard on trying to keep the trash like it's supposed to be. If y'all can't do something with regulated trash, the county needs to go to some kind of sector because you're getting cars from Buford, Eldon Head, Pritchaville, Bluffston, Savila, coming in and doing recycling stuff. Upstate Greys, you're getting them from Hampton, Mestle, and probably Bathburg.
Thank you, sir. We'll check on that.
So something's got to be done.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all hauling trash for people that don't need to be helped.
We don't want to be doing that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I tried several times, told him that I thought he had, trying to see Mr. Fulgham, and I never could reach him. Every time I talk to his secretary, he's got excuse.
We'll get you in touch with him and we'll work on that and get back with you, Mr. Nettles, on that and make sure Mr. Fulgham. Do we have your cell number?
Aye.
We got your phone number. If you could give that to Mr. Fulgham, just to make sure he's got it too.
Two.
We'll do that.
24843, 247, 1943. But I've tried for two years to see.
Thank you, Mr. Nettles.
You got my number, Mr. Nettles. You got my number. I'll call you back.
Aye, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I would really appreciate it if y'all weren't at the road. I worked. I worked at this weekend and an old truck.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, sir.
It's private now.
Paul, did you want to say something with the road?
I'm back there to say things.
Yes, sir.
Jim Nettles.
We're going. You know, I don't see-
Can you say?
Yes.
Paul Nettles.
Yes, sir. I'm, I don't know anything about it being closed, open, whatever, but I do know we need some type of help out there.
Yes, sir.
Especially during bad weather.
We'll check. Thank you, Captain. Mr. Fulgham Mule, need to look into that.
Yes, sir. I'll coordinate with you. Also, Mr. Benkies, since you've had some comments.
Yes, there's $13 back there.
Okay, Steve, Stephen Facy.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you.
Quincy Bentley. Is that Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
How are you, sir? Welcome.
Doing good, sir. Thank you. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So basically, again, I've been up here talking to the council before about the roads and we need line house, that area. It just, it needs a lot of work, needs a lot of attention. And now, I know with the infrastructure bill, South Carolina got a lot of money. And we really need to put some, some money into those roads, traffic pattern down there on 315, need some attention. You can't get out of that, you can't. The residents down there can't get in and out of the driveways. I mean, it takes 10, 15 minutes to get out of the roads down there. And when you look at peak hours, it's getting ridiculous. And somebody needs to take a look at it before somebody gets hurt or worse down there. And the other thing I want to talk about was the elections. So I had the opportunity to attend a Republican campaign event prior to the election. I heard some disturbing claims of ballot stuffing and dead people voting. Well, now that the vote is over, Republicans had a really good night, right? And I haven't heard anything else about ballot stuffings or rigged elections or anything like that. All right, so our election process is supposed to be sacred. I've been looking for the audit results for the county. Maybe it's not out yet. But I'm going to assume that between handouts and everything else, it was all in the up and up. I would really like to see or hear the elected officials speak out and speak to the public in that regards so that we can regain the confidence in our electoral system. Because the elections can't just be fair when Republicans win, right? The country, our country wasn't built like that and it can't continue. We're not going to be America that we claim to be if it's only going to be right when the Republicans win. So I would really like to see something, whether it's this council, but on our local level, I would really like to see something and hear something about our elected officials stepping up and saying that, hey, this election, previous elections and elections moving forward are fair and on the up and up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mark, is it Baronov? Mark Berenow?
Yes, sir. What's the toll we got?
All right. We voted on the consent agenda earlier. Next, council member comments. Councilman Ben Geeson.
Mr. Kemp.
The week.
I report.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I got so much to say.
I know. It's late hour. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll be very brief. I had just two items to discuss with you. One was about exit three primarily for the public's benefit. As you know, the opinion of probable cause for that project has escalated since 2020 approximately seventy-five percent, and we were running short in revenue to try to keep up with that project, keep pace with it. I had the pleasure of going to Columbia before the South Carolina Infrastructure Bank Board with Councilman Camp and Mayor Harry Williams, and we had a good day on November the twentieth. The state awarded with some conditions another grant of $35 million to get us where we need to be. And so we're very pleased with that. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, multiple councils. Been a lot of people, a lot of staff members involved at the county and the city. So we're moving forward, and we're still alive with that project, and we'll be reporting back to you when we know more about the letting of it in conjunction with I-95. I did want to tell you that the Levy Sewer Project is one I gave you a full warning of, that we were trying to make application for a potential sewer extension in that area. And we have Ms. Heather Rattler tonight who serves as a consultant for us, and she led the team that I had mentioned in my report in making the grant application, and she has a little presentation to give to you tonight about that application.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, and Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy holidays. Do you mind if you scroll in there? Is that okay? That's fine. Okay, great. I appreciate it. So it's a pleasure to be standing in front of you all once again. I am here to brief you on the EPA grant that we just submitted on November 21st to the So let's talk about the opportunity. Jasper County, in partnership with the Water Sewer Authority as well as Beaufort-Jasper EOC, worked with the Low Country Council of Governments, the COG, to apply for the EPA Community Change Grant for the Levy Limehouse community. This EPA grant has both a sewer hookup component and a stay-in-place home repair component, a weatherization project with community outreach. The sewer hookup component would be monitored by the Water Sewer Authority, and the community outreach and weatherization would be run by the EOC. And both elements are requirements of this grant. This grant would allow for 213 parcels in the Levy Limehouse community access to sewer hookup and weatherization improvements, and communities could apply for up to $20 million. We applied for a little over $17 million, and that included a partial in-kind dollars from the Water Sewer Authority. So let's talk about the issue. The Levy Limehouse community is the lowest geographical region in the South Carolina Low Country. It has very vulnerable components in terms of flooding and also environmental challenges. More than 20 documented flooding events occurred in 2023, and those were with minor storms. We saw major storms in 2024 with Debbie and Helene, and they caused catastrophic damage, including submerged homes and passable roads and flooded farmlands. The infrastructure improvements to this area are a goal of both Jasper County as well as the Water Sewer Authority. So the goals of the grant. When we assembled the team, I always like to work backwards, you know? What are the goals and work backwards from there? So we decided that the goals would be the following. We wanted to provide sewer hookups to 213 households in the community. We wanted to preserve generational land ownership and ensure properties could remain livable. We wanted to strengthen our community ties through outreach and shared resources like the EOC provides. We wanted to ensure safe passage now and in the future for our residents, our businesses, law enforcement, and of course, emergency services. We wanted to build a resilient future for the people in the Levy Limehouse community, and we wanted to enhance our working relationships with our partners such as Beaufort-Jasper Water Sewer Authority, the EOC, as well as the Council of Governments, the COG. Here is an example of our project flow chart. The name of our EPA project was investing in resilience in Levy Limehouse. Jasper County Government, y'all, are the lead applicant. The collaborating entity is the Water Sewer Authority, and our statutory partner is the EOC. And if given the granting funds, that's how the flow chart will work, all the way down to a community advisory committee in Levy Limehouse, faith-based partners, and working with our local businesses and nonprofits in the area. So let's talk about the timeline. Right now, we are looking at confirming our eligibility with the EPA, and I am expecting that we will get that confirmation on the eligibility by the end of December. After the eligibility check, we will be notified if our proposal is selected. I'm feeling very bullish about this proposal. We garnered a lot of really great resources into this proposal, and I'm extremely excited about everything that we have documented. We do have a new administration coming in, and the EPA is working as quickly as possible to review all applications and to get applicants into contract. I should have an update for you at your January 6th or January 21st meeting. And I just do need to let you all know that, as far as I'm aware, there's never been a more comprehensive effort to document the narratives in the Levy Limehouse community along with photography, videos, and first-person accounts of what's happening in that community. So I'm feeling very excited that this will lead to additional resources in the community in the future. This is the project area. So we're looking at the red area, and that's the 213 parcels. And if awarded the funds, the marketing campaign that the EOC will work with the Beaufort-Jasper Water Sewer Authority on is leaving next. And again, this is a partnership project. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Van Geeson, any more questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Clark?
So with this sewer coming through, where you're coming to, where you're spouting, you're going to come on Highway 17 down in the Tombville section because there's no sewer down in that area. It's still septic, man.
Correct. So it's, the purpose of the project is to connect folks in those 213 parcels outlined in the, in the red area, inside that red area, to sewer in the, in the area. We are expecting about an 80% rate of hookup. So you take that 213 and you boil it down to 80. I can't remember what the number was, but that's what our expectation is that we'll be able to achieve, and we have a three-year period to do it. Again, provided that we get the funds from the EPA. But again, Ms. Clark, I will tell you that the documentation that we worked on in order to put this project proposal together to the feds is really robust, and so now we have all the resources we need for both state and federal funding in the future. I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, I'm excited, too, but I want to see some sewer down in Tombville also.
I understand.
And Bellinger Hill. I don't think it's not down in Bellinger Hill either.
Understand, ma'am. Yes.
Can you, Mr. Ryan?
And what was the total number of roofed, 238 is what you said?
213 parcels.
213 parcels, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What decided what you're going to put it in, what the rated areas going to be?
That was a decision that was made with our partner, Beaufort-Jasper Water Sewer Authority, in order for them to determine what they could do with the amount of money. We were maxed out at a $20 million grant, and so the rate of where they could apply that sewer with maximum effectiveness.
Now, that's all new story.
Correct. Yes, sir. And does anybody need any help on the map? Like, everybody knows where we are in this? Okay, all right, good.
It's just that BB road is very bad during a rainstorm.
Yes, sir. Completely, yes. Absolutely.
Include SCDOT. They're part of the problem. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rattler.
Thank you.
That concludes your report.
It does, sir. Thank you.
Council member comments. Mr. Van Geeson. Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything much to say, all except this will be the last time I will be sitting in this chair. I will be leaving you. It's been a pleasure, but I think I'm going to have more fun doing what I really want to do. So I thank those of you who had confidence in me to elect me for 16 years, and I want somebody else to take this seat. Now, I know some of you right up there thought you were doing me harm. All the time you were doing me so much good when you went to the polls and voted against me. I was pleased for that. You didn't know my plan. And you hear the saying that the devil had a plan, but it backfired on them. Your plan backfired because I am so happy. And I pray God bless Jill and Chris.
Likewise.
To do the right thing for the people of Jasper County and to take care of the administrative staff. You're not going to find a better person than Andy. You're not going to find one, so it's no need looking. Please, take care of your staff. Take care of your work because they are essential to you. Because without them, there's nothing you can do. They can make you, or they can break you. So good luck to all of you. Have a Merry Merry Christmas. And my address is 147 Bush Clock Drive. You can send my presents, but please, don't come.
And also good her to get a good meal, too. Miss Barbara, I just want to say thank you personally from me, from serving on the council with you. You are, I've always nicknamed you the First Lady of Jasper County. I've seen your effort, time, and sweat you've put in to being on this council. It's definitely a thankless job and sacrifice away from your family and everything else in life to do what you do. And you've done it well, and we appreciate you. Thank you for your support. I pray that the Lord will continue to bless you and your family.
Oh, yes, he has tremendous.
Enjoy your retirement. Stay healthy and have fun, and just God bless you, and I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, so.
Thank you too, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan?
Keep it brief. First, I'd like to thank the staff, especially Ms. Lattler with Public Works for getting the trees and everything decorated in here. Looks amazing. But also want to go back to one of the comments during public session. I was at the dump over the past week. I was off last week, and I, too, saw several folks out. I think we need to get a grip on that before it becomes a problem. I brought it up at I think last meeting or meeting before. As far as when it comes to folks with the waste there, we have one container, obviously look like a landscape trailer from, you obviously could tell they're doing it for commercial. Fills up the container, and our citizens have nowhere to put their yard debris. But definitely need to have some type of workshop or look in the future with that because it's definitely putting a strain on our citizens that are patiently waiting for another roll-off container to get there to be able to dump their materials. Other than that, thank you to staff for job well done throughout the year, and have a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Kemp, I attended the Beaufort-Jasper Water Fund to Serve Committee, which was the originator of this grant. They discovered the grant and gave it to Jasper County. So they are doing good work. One of the heads of it is Lorraine Bond. She is really important in trying to get sewage in Leavy. One thing is I have to thank Alton Jenkins and Corey Bivins for having the Veterans Outreach Party down at the Sergeant Jasper Park. I've never seen more people at Sergeant Jasper Park. Just never. They were there. Everybody was had a good time, and they're eyeing the veterans. And I have to say that Alton Jenkins did a hell of a job, excuse the expression.
Alton.
That's how exciting it was. And Corey Bivins was there helping. And so did the chief. He brought down the lights on it. Anyway, and my last thing is, public service to anybody, they have to be honored. Barbara and I have had many discussions. We all know the situation. But I have to honor her because she did serve. Anybody that serves the county takes the grief that sometimes happens, the time that you have to work, they have to be honored. So thank you, Barbara, for doing the service.
Thank you, John.
And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. I've worked with our chamber board in the big Thursday Chamber Oyster Roast, cooking all the oysters. I think we cooked about 40 bushels at the farmer's market a couple weeks ago. We had a great time, well attended, and thank everybody who joined us that evening.
I wanted to be there to get some...
Now, today, we had our Jasper Chamber Justin Ali Baker Scholarship Golf Tournament at Riveter Point, and first time I'd been in there in a few years, and man, has it grown. But I counted at least 60 homes under construction, but we had a great tournament. We had a full field, 23 teams, 92 players, great turnout, and this is our main event to raise scholarship dollars for a graduating senior from each of our county high schools. And we present them with a check at graduation to each, each graduating senior, which is selected by the faculty and staff there at each respective school. So great, great program to support education in Jasper County, and I'm proud to be a part of that as well. Without further ado, I think that wraps up everything. And Mr. Fulgham, thank you for your report. Anything that the staff does, I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. And then we have our county luncheon for the staff on Thursday, I believe it is?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay, Wednesday. And that is here in the county building that afternoon, so I look forward to seeing everybody there. And thank you for that. And at this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. Make a motion for adjournment? Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. All right, have a good evening.